Evening, everyone. We are here for the city council meeting on April 4th, 2016. And we'll start with a roll call and determination of quorum. Heidi?
Laurenti.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyfembach.
Here.
Doyle. Estes.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
William McCormick.
Okay, now we'll go to the invocation by Andy Coyle. And following, you can come over to the podium over here. And then following the invocation, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
The phrase came to my mind, "Seek the welfare of the people." And that is what you are doing here tonight. And thankful for your work here and all of you as we seek the welfare of Rapid City and all the needs that are represented in that. Let's pray. Father, thank you for this evening. We're thankful for your presence here tonight. We're thankful for those that you have brought here tonight. We're thankful for the elected officials that you have brought to this position and all the difficult responsibilities and decisions that are entailed in that role. We're thankful for those others that are here tonight as well. Father, we desire the welfare of Rapid City. Lord, we know that when the people are strong, everything works better, Lord. And when the government is strong, people are happy and things are smooth. And Father, that is difficult sometimes. Father, there's a lot of issues that are taking place in our country, in our city, in our communities, a lot of difficult decisions needing to be made. Father, I pray tonight for unity. I pray for wisdom. I pray for open ears. I pray that you would allow there to be clarity of thought, clarity of words, that there'd be a soft tongue, Lord, as you would desire in your word, and that people would listen to each other. And we just pray that you would direct and guide tonight for your glory and for the good of your people here, the good of Rapid City. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now onto the adoption of the agenda. Hey, we have a motion and a second to adopt this agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we're on to words and recognitions. And for the first one, I'll have Chief Jagerus join me down front.
Okay, if you have all staff members from the ESCC, please come up with us.
Well, tonight we're going to honor telecommunications, emergency dispatchers. This is something that, of course, I've had a lot of contact with in my former career. Chief Jagerus depends on, in his as well. These men and women standing behind me are active members in the emergency dispatch arena. So I have a proclamation to read, and then Chief Jagerus will have a few things to say. Whereas the city of Rapid City recognizes the significance of the 911 dispatch center to the city and surrounding community, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Emergency Services Communication Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact of our citizens when our citizens have contact with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Pennington County Emergency Services Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, hereby proclaim April 10th through 16th, 2016, as National Telecommunicators Week in Rapid City, and urge all Rapid City residents to participate in and show their support. Let's give these folks a round of applause.
Okay. So I want to share just a couple pieces of information with the city, the residents, and with the city council as well. One thing that is somewhat unique about our Emergency Communications Services Center is that it is a multi-agency, multi-jurisdiction center. So these men and women are employed by Pennington County officially. However, they serve the city of Rapid City Police Department, fire, ambulance, and also more recently, we've transitioned with the state of South Dakota so that they serve our Highway Patrol. And then there's also a lot of other miscellaneous agencies involved. So from a management function, that's kind of a complicated structure. However, for efficiencies and for cost efficiencies, especially for the taxpayers, this is a very beneficial arrangement. So I want to share a letter of commendation with one of the staff members of the ESCC. That's Deputy Director Ted Ruffeld, right here. And I'm just going to read this here. Mayor Allender and city council members, I am writing today in recognition of a longtime staff member of the Emergency Services Communication Center, Ted Ruffeld. He currently serves as the Deputy Director and has been with the center in some capacity for almost 25 years. His most recent accomplishment was as interim director during the center's transition to new leadership. His dedication to the center and its staff during a strenuous period was encouraging to the entire ESCC users board. He worked hard to improve employee morale and prepared the center for a new direction. Mr. Ruffeld has gone above and beyond during his career with the dispatch center. He shows compassion for callers who are in great distress, and he exemplifies the necessary professionalism in his profession calls for. And he demonstrates leadership through difficult circumstances that are the nature of our business. I am honored to recognize Mr. Ruffeld for his achievements.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And then, one final introduction to mayor, council, and citizens is the new director of the dispatch center, Kevin Carley, who is a retired captain with the South Dakota Highway Patrol.
Well, I'd want to thank the mayor, the police chief, and the city council for the proclamation and for the recognition. Surprised and appreciate it very much and somewhat humbled. I consider myself just a servant to the citizens, and the people who do the work are the dispatchers. They're there 24 hours a day. There's nine or 10 of them working right now. They're there 24 hours a day. I've always viewed my job as that to support them and get them whatever they need. So they certainly deserve all the credit. It's just been my honor to work there. It's one of the jobs that I truly, every day, get up and look forward to going to work. I've never woke up and said, "Oh, boy, what am I doing here?" So it's a great job. It's a great organization. The people there are great. And I just want to thank everybody for the recognition and the proclamation. So thank you very much.
other proclamation. In the meantime, how many of us in the audience here volunteer? Would have been easier to ask who didn't volunteer, but more embarrassing. Well, that's the way we are around these, around town. So this is a proclamation recognizing National Volunteer Week. Whereas every community member can affect positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or small, and in South Dakota, 228,660 people volunteer annually, making us ninth in the country for volunteerism. The value of those volunteer hours is $469.9 million. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations like volunteer centers, and whereas millions of volunteers working in their communities utilize their time and talent daily to make a real difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly, and whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneself and service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and whereas our country's volunteer force, which is over 62.8 million people with 7.9 billion hours volunteered, is a great treasure. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, to hereby proclaim April 10th through April 16th, 2016, as National Volunteer Week in Rapid City, and urge all citizens of any age to get involved and volunteer in the community. So let's give each other a round of applause tonight. Good job.
I wasn't planning to speak, but so, well, thank you for doing this. As most people know, the nonprofit organizations in the Black Hills couldn't do what they do each day without volunteers. And so it's important to recognize the work they do, the hours they put in, and the financial value of that. So we have some agency representatives, and then we have some great teen-up volunteers who do a great deal in the community. So thanks.
Very much. Thank you all for your service. So let's crowd in and have a...
How do we do that?
Have this.
All right.
We have a lot of speaker request forms tonight, so I'm trying to keep them in order. Pardon me? Connie Lizolk, I'm not sure which item you want to speak on, ma'am. Are you here? Is Connie here? Okay, we'll get to that later. Okay, now, item three on the agenda is a staff presentation, an update and presentation on draft concepts from the downtown area master plan.
Good evening, city council, citizens of Rapid City. My name is Sarah Hansel. I'm with the Long Range Planning Division. As you know, the city of Rapid City, in partnership with the Business Improvement District and Destination Rapid City, has been working on a master plan for the downtown area. For the past seven months or so, we've been working on a public engagement strategy with the community. We've had several focus groups, stakeholder meetings, an online survey, community open houses, and we've also done a market assessment. And at this point, there are some preliminary recommendations and some kind of key concepts that are emerging that are going to be recommended to go into the draft plan. So at this point, we'd just like to get some of these concepts before you and give a brief presentation and overview of where we are with the downtown master plan and what some of the key concepts emerging out of that process are. So I thought I'd like to introduce Brad Siegel with Progressive Urban Management Associates. This is the lead consulting firm that we're working with on the project.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, city council. It's a pleasure to be back in Rapid. We have been in town about a half dozen times since the first time we met with the council back in September. And tonight, I'm going to give you a brief presentation that's a preview of community open houses that we'll be holding over the next two days. So tomorrow evening, beginning at 6:00 at the Dahl Arts Center, and then again Wednesday morning at 8:00, 8:00 a.m., we'll be providing a complete overview of initial plan concepts, and we'll be seeking more comments from folks in the, in the community. The downtown plan we're going to suggest is really a call to action for Rapid City, and it's not just a planning exercise, but we really feel it's a key to the economic prosperity of really the whole region over the next several years. Rapid City is competing with every city in the, in the upper Midwest in the country right now for young, skilled talent, really, to drive jobs and to drive economic development. And whether these young people are growing up in town and we want to keep them, or they've left and we want to bring them back, what we're finding increasingly that downtown, and a vital downtown, is, is an important part of this equation. So part of the downtown plan is really about how do we stay economically relevant? How do we keep and attract a young, skilled workforce here? And also, how do we provide a downtown that welcomes everyone in our community with a whole variety of activities? The master plan itself will have several sections, and this is what we'll go over in detail tomorrow and Wednesday morning at the open houses. It's founded on a market assessment that really provides opportunities for new development in downtown over the next five to seven years, an extensive community outreach process that's included input from more than 1,700 Rapid City residents, a physical framework to really set priorities for future, future capital investment, an action plan to guide implementation of the plan, also getting into some fair amount of detail in terms of design guidelines and zoning revisions, particularly in the area east of Fifth in downtown. As I mentioned, the community outreach and response to this plan has been outstanding. It really has been, we've seen far more people engaged in this process than we see in most communities that we, that we work in. More than 1,700 stakeholders have participated either in working groups, interviews, our past open houses back in January. We had a three-day design charrette in February, and then also more than 1,400 responses to an online survey. This slide shows the responses to, in the online survey. We asked citizens to tell us, "What's your vision for downtown? What do you want downtown to be 10 years from now?" And the larger the word on the slide, the more it was, it was entered into the survey. What this tells us is we want to be innovative, and we want to have some bold ideas for downtown, but we also want to make sure we take care of the basics. And this downtown plan will do that. It will make sure that the fundamentals of a safe, clean downtown where it's easy to park is as important as some of these other words that, that, that shot out, such as a vibrant, friendly, fun downtown as well. In terms of all the outreach we did, these are the common themes and the priorities and the plan that we will present tomorrow night, Wednesday morning, really pivots around many of these key, key ideas. Housing, we found a lot of pent-up demand for downtown housing at a variety of price points and, and market tastes. Jobs and innovation really being the bottom line of this whole downtown plan. Connecting better with the School of Mines and trying to achieve the Rapid City as a college town, as opposed to a town that maybe just so happens to have a college. Parking remains an issue, and we have some suggestions on improved parking management, fundamentally making downtown safe and clean. Also pedestrians, bicyclists, an emerging need to have better ways, different ways to get around downtown other than just in vehicles. Connections to the creek, School of Mines, surrounding neighborhoods. So the core values from the plan, and this is what we will be aiming to achieve in every of, in each of the actions that are recommended, so we want to make sure that downtown is prosperous, it's connected, active, welcoming, and livable. The plan includes a physical framework that looks at different physical elements and really can be a guide for the city for many years to come, particularly as it relates to capital investment, as we look at capital priorities for streets and other infrastructure. We look at downtown in two different character districts, essentially divided by Fifth Street. West of Fifth is the historic downtown, east of Fifth, stretching to the School of Mines, an area for innovation and testing new ideas, also a place for, for people to live throughout. The plan gets into a fair amount of detail in terms of suggestions of how to treat different streets downtown. So we look at which streets should remain primarily automobile or vehiculally oriented streets. We also look at areas to introduce more aggressive use of streets for bicycles, pedestrians, and public space as well. There are design guidelines that are emerging out of this. We'll be seeking input tomorrow night and Wednesday morning at the Dahl Center. We'll be seeking input on emerging design guidelines that help reinforce the different districts that we're divine, that we're defining as well. Finally, this plan will have an action plan, essentially a business plan, which provides near-term and long-term ideas for improving downtown. The action plan is divided into three bundles of activity. The economy bundle there relates to housing, new investment, and jobs. The experience bundle relates to that experience of either driving, walking, or bicycling through downtown. And the environment relates to the physical infrastructure and how our investment in infrastructure moving forward can reinforce both investment in downtown and also the experience. The action plan will go into a fair amount of detail, and tomorrow night and Wednesday morning, we'll be seeking to establish priorities among these nine different actions that I'll briefly walk you through tonight. But the action plan will be seeking ways to encourage housing everywhere, sprinkled throughout downtown. Our market assessment found that downtown could absorb anywhere from 200 to 350 units over the next five, five years. And we see these, again, being spread, sprinkled throughout downtown in various places. Secondly, an emphasis on jobs and innovation, and looking at the area east of Fifth Street as an area to create new, small, creative firms, and also create partnerships with the School of Mines. The third idea there, college town, how do we strengthen all sorts of connections with the School of Mines? And we'll come up with ideas on both physical, economic development, and programming ideas to do that. The experience piece of this, fourth, places for people, we're looking for gathering spots and green space throughout downtown. Parking management, given that the market is changing and the character of downtown is changing quickly, are there some better ways maybe to manage the existing supply of parking and perhaps expand the supply of parking in key locations? And safe and clean, how do we make sure that the experience down here is one that, that people have confidence that they're going to be safe and also the, the environment is going to be well-maintained? And then lastly, in terms of the physical environment, we've identified several key streets that we feel will, will make sense to have some special treatment moving forward. So we have several recommendations on key streets, ranging from landscaping to also maybe narrowing some streets as well. Connections and gateways are the eighth bundle there, and the connections and gateways relate to how we get to different attractions, whether it's the Civic Center, or the School of Mines, or a variety of other different destinations. And then lastly, zoning and land use. We will be getting pretty detailed in terms of zoning recommendations, particularly zoning east of Fifth, which we've learned that the current zoning really is, is inhibiting some of the type of development that the market really could bring in terms of mixed use and housing concepts. So plan implementation and what's to come. I mentioned we're pivoting into the final stretch in this process. Over the next month, we'll be collecting the ideas over the next several days, and then incorporating them into a final draft plan document. We'll be back working with council committees toward the end of May and early June. Public review as we go into the summer with a planned adoption by the 1st of August. So at this point, Mayor, I don't know how much time we have allocated tonight, but again, the intention tonight is to provide a preview to the council and the community at large on the open houses that'll be conducted tomorrow and Wednesday.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation. Any questions from the council? Brad Estes?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll move to acknowledge.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Everyone in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. That takes us on to general public comment, and there are no speaker request forms for general public comment unless Connie Lizolk...
Lizat.
Lizat?
Yeah.
Is Connie here?
Yeah.
Raise your hand, Connie. Okay, I'm going to keep calling her name every time we get a break. Lizat. Okay, no speaker request forms for general public comment, so we'll go pass on to the non-public hearing items, items four through 49, and there are no speaker request forms on those items either. So we'll go on to consent items, four through 42. The council like to remove any items, would Ron Wyfembach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 21 and number 32.
Okay, we have items 21 and number 32 being pulled. Any other items? We have a motion to approve these items with the exception of 21 and 32. Okay, we have motion and a second. And all in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 21, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the city of Rapid City and respect for professional services for water rights acquisition assistance in the amount of $150,000. We'll go to Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Go ahead.
My question here is I'd like to ask for a update on the Wally Byam Water Rights, see where we're at with that, since we transferred that property, and there was some confusion about the water rights.
Okay, we have items twenty-one and number thirty-two being pulled. Any other items? We have a motion to approve these items with the exception of twenty-one and thirty-two.
So, second.
Okay, we have motion and a second.
Bye, everybody.
And all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number twenty-one. To authorize mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the city of Rapid City and respec for professional services for water rights acquisition assistance in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll go to Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Go ahead.
My question here is, I'd like to ask for a update on the Wally Byam Water Rights. See where we're at with that, since we transferred that property. And there was some confusion about the water rights.
Is this?
I'm not sure who would answer that question.
Is that included in item twenty-one?
Yeah.
Is that the same property?
Yep. That's acquisition of water rights.
Yeah, let's put that question on to Dale Tech then. Or would you like to?
Mayor, I'd like to defer to our city attorney, Joel Landine. He may have more information than I.
So deferred.
I don't have an update on it right now. We've been talking about it, but the person who we're dealing with did not have a response and wanted to wait and see how some things came out. And I need to follow up with him again and see if he's ready to continue that discussion. If Ms. Wy, Alderman Wyfembach has more questions about it, he can get ahold of me directly and I'd be happy to talk to him about it.
I do have more questions. I think it, I will follow up. Thank you.
Okay, motion for his approval on item twenty-one. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we'll go on to item thirty-two, which is to authorize staff to draft an ordinance regulating short-term rentals. And we'll go back to Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was reading the letter from the South Dakota Hotel and Lodging Association, and I was going through these bullet points here, and I come up with a question of what direction are we giving the staff? I mean, do they, do they have a pointed direction in, 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 I mean, how do you regulate something that we're really not in the business to do, to regulate? I look at these bullet points here and, you know, some of these are just way out of the question. Number one, we don't control homeowners' associations, or we don't control landlords. I mean, those are contracts between the, the, I just don't want to create more regulation over something. So I guess if someone could answer me, if we're gonna direct the staff to do this, what are we directing them to do?
Is that a question for fellow council people or for the?
I wouldn't, anybody that can answer it, I think Legal and Finance, I'm not sure if they approved it or if, or, it looks like it's an approval item here, so. I'm just, I don't want, I hate to direct the staff to do something and say, just do this. There's no, I mean, these bullet points on here are just, there's no way you can do these things.
Okay, let's go to Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Wyfembach, at Legal and Finance Committee meeting, there was a presentation given, and the question was posed as far as what direction staff was looking for. At this time, the staff has gone through the Planning Commission, and then we did have an issue come before the City Council concerning a B and B, Airbed B and B, or B and B Airbed rental property. And at that time, the City Council had discussed the potential of having staff look into drafting to take a look at how that would affect our economy with more of those that were coming into our area. And so at Legal and Finance, staff had looked up and said that basically properties, if I remember correctly, basically properties that engaged in renting out the house or the facility for more than fourteen days kind of falls into some regulations that are already applied in our city and state. And anything that, that falls, you know, if someone leases their house out for less than fourteen days out of a year, you know, that doesn't fall into a rental type. So, the direction, to answer your question, the direction that Legal and Finance recommended or is recommended to City Council is to let staff take a look at what's available at the state level, what's currently available at our city level, prepare a draft ordinance to bring to us for consideration of what, what the city could do to try to take a look at some of these short-term rental facilities and, and what the qualifications would be at that time. So, it's strictly just to have staff come back with a, with a draft ordinance at this point. And the question was posed at Legal and Finance roughly, how long would that take? And staff said it would be probably ninety to a hundred and twenty days before they brought anything back. If there's any other questions or if Mr. Dale Tech wants to respond in case I misspoke, but that was my understanding from Legal and Finance.
No, I greatly appreciate it. I just don't want the city going down a rabbit hole of trying to regulate everything everybody does when there's already regulations available to monitor these. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. We had discussed one of these situations earlier on in the year, I think it was maybe September or October, and the consideration at that time for the neighborhood was the parking that people that came to stay in these residential neighborhoods were taking up parking, sometimes blocking other driveways or even fire hydrants. So, that was a concern. Also, just not knowing, you know, having any kind of filter for the type of people that were coming into the area. Yeah, I know that's maybe a little paranoid, but that was something that was, was brought up as a consideration. Also, I think that, you know, our rally business here with homeowners is a huge part of our financial equation, and I think that that should be different from a full summertime use or a full year use of B and B, that the rally might have a different type of, of scope or ordinance when, when it comes to letting people rent their homes during that particular time period, 'cause as we know, space is at such a premium that I think that a lot of people are really, they depend on, on those homes and those situations where you can rent out a home during, during the rally, and people also depend on that income. So, I'd almost like to have that in a different category as opposed to the year-round or summer-long B and Bs. Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make that motion to direct staff to come back with an ordinance as far as their best effort based on the regulations that are currently enforced and what they see would be best practices.
I think that sounds like the original motion to me. I think that's the understanding, anyway.
Yeah, there was no motion, so I was just making the motion. If you want Ms. Alderman Wyfembach to be made for making that, that's fine.
Motion and a second, acknowledged. No. Chad Lewis.
Thank you for your question. Okay, thank you. I just was gonna say, this is, you know, something that I think we need to kind of stay on top of, because if you look around the world these days, the world's largest bank doesn't have any, doesn't have any branches, and the world's largest taxi service owns nothing, and then being the world's largest hospitality is B and B and Airbnb, they own no, no property. So it's just, this is the future, folks, and we need to stay ahead of the curve on this and make sure we have some regulations in place to keep on top, top of things. So I think that's just a natural evolution and I applaud staff for going ahead and making that step and, for us being on top of it, so, thank you.
Okay, the motion is to approve. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. That takes us through the consent items. Now we're on to non-consent items, forty-three through forty-nine. There are no speaker request forms for those items. However, is Connie Lazzat here? Okay. So, on to number forty-three, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number forty-three is a second reading of ordinance number six-one-zero-zero, an ordinance to add microbreweries as a conditional use in the Central Business District by amending section seventeen-point-one-six-point-zero-three-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second by John Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number forty-four is a second reading of ordinance number six-one-zero-one, an ordinance to codify the process for commercial parking permits by adding section ten-point-four-four to the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second by Richie Nordstrom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number forty-five.
Next item, please.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Item number forty-five is a first reading of ordinance number six-one-one-one, an ordinance to change the terms and powers of the Rapid City Regional Airport Board by amending sections two-point-seven-two-point-zero-three-zero and two-point-seven-two-point-zero-seven-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Make a motion to approve.
Second by Jerry Wright. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. This takes us on down to item number forty-six, and for this, let's go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty-six is a request by KTM Design Solutions for Hague Brothers LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for lots one through three of blocks one with lots one through three of Moon Meadows, generally described as being located along Moon Meadows Drive east of Highway sixteen, and I move to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Next item, forty-seven, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request by Britton Engineering for Troy and Lisa Eisenbrom for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed tracks A and B of Eisenbrom subdivision, generally described as being located east of Reservoir Road and south of South Side Drive, and I move to approve with stipulations.
Second by Steve Laurenti. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. That takes us down to item forty-eight under the mayor's items. This is authorization for funding for ADA repairs at the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center from the Vision account in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-five-thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, twenty-three cents. And the recommendation was to take to this council meeting without recommendation. Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second by Jerry Wright, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd also like to thank the Finance Director for providing us with an update on the Vision Fund. I believe, and I just want clarification on this issue, that when we're talking about authorization of funding for these ADA repairs out of the Vision Fund account, we are still dealing with the current five-year plan, which is through 2015. And if I read the Vision Fund balance correctly, I'm directing my question to the Finance Officer, there is more than one-point-three-million dollars currently in the balance, and so the balance of the undesignated cash within that fund would cover these repairs out of the current five-year plan. That is correct. Thank you, Mayor. I can support this since the money is available and it is currently in the five-year plan. Thank you.
Now we'll go to Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna take an opportunity to take a little bit of leadway here on this, and I think this is a great motion to do. This is the same motion, the same thing I talked about from the very beginning of, we had, we had the ADA people look at this place, they know what's wrong with it, they knew what was wrong with it from the very beginning. If we had, from the very beginning had the original intentions of fixing this, this would have been one of the first projects that we did without all the hoopla. Vindication takes a while. It took a huge beating on this thing in the very beginning when we were looking at spending three-hundred-and-eighty-million dollars, and the numbers for the ADA repairs came back at anywhere from thirty million to seventy million. And here we're fixing the whole outside, entire outside of the Barnett Arena for one-point-three-five million, for one-point-three-three-five-million dollars. And of this, I didn't count them, but I would bet, I would venture to say this, these repairs will, will come up into the hundreds. I think the number that was given at the time was like seven-hundred things needed to be repaired. These, this, this one-point-three will take care of hundreds of those items, hundreds. So I think this is a good move. We're gonna make this accessible. There's a lot of parking lot, a lot of sign movement, a lot of water fountain movement, a lot of fixing of restrooms and things like that. So I think that this approach that we're taking is a good approach to take. Take it a step at a time, step back, and make sure we're doing it correctly. So vindication does come at some point if anybody out there's listening. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Jerry Wright.
For the record, I think we need to clearly state that the issue before us are ADA requirements outside of the Barnett Arena, and the issue voted on a year ago was totally dedicated to repairing changes within the Barnett Arena or close to it. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to emphasize, and it seems like that's the main issue that's getting avoided, that we're not talking about the Barnett Arena. This is for everything else but the Barnett Arena, and for some reason that we're, we're not getting that point across. And, and this will be covering the majority of those issues that are going to be dealt with, the ADA, within everything else but the Barnett Arena. And, and I want to also thank the, the staff at the Civic Center for doing what they can do, because some of these things are being done in-house. So I appreciate the enthusiasm from the, the staff as well. And the, the people that are involved in this have explained it very clearly, and it's easily understandable to verify that we do have needs that need to be addressed in the ADA issues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to voice my support for it as well. I just want to make sure that people out there and the people here tonight understand that this is not an attempt to step outside of keeping the community involved with the Vision Fund, which is part of the ordinance for Vision. The fact of the matter is, this is something that the council, the city government obligated itself to do with the ADA. So we have a binding agreement that we need to make sure that we are making sure that the Civic Center is accessible for those people with disabilities, and I do support that a hundred percent, and I'll be voting yes tonight. Thank you.
Now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also wanted to voice, voice my support for this. This has been a long time coming. This is one of these projects that should have been done quite a while ago and probably should have been done before we started looking at the Barnett Arena a few years ago. But I'm very happy that this project and this part of this is getting done finally, and we are doing it with funds that we have on hand, so we're not borrowing any money, we're not putting any more burden on the taxpayers. So I just want to say this is, the Civic Center did a wonderful job with this, brought it forward, and thank you, Greg. Thank you for the board, and this has been absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting this as well, and I think a lot of this really can be laid on the door of the past directors that didn't get these things changed when they should have. So now that we're left with these kinds of pressing problems, the Disabilities Committee on which I serve is very in favor of these things and are also looking forward to changes in the Barnett, so they can have access to the many wonderful activities and concerts and events that go on there as well. They feel at this time they really do not have full access to the Barnett, but for the rest of the Civic Center, they're looking forward to these changes, as am I. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, and I would just like to add on this item that I think everything else has been covered, but I want to add on here, I'm gonna draw public attention to a minor mistake that I made. There's a professional estimate of repairs here for this, of one-point-three-three-eight million. And I wrote a letter to the council, which is linked to this item, and I relayed my understanding of that estimate, and I, I didn't communicate properly. The Civic Center's already spent sixty-five-thousand dollars that was committed last year by the council contingency, an additional fifty-nine-thousand dollars. And so that is included in that one-point-three-three-eight. So minor communication glitch there. So by my, my new math, I calculate that the amount needed for the repairs is one million, two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars, and I believe a contingency is appropriate there, about eight-and-three-quarters percent, for a total of one-hundred, or one million, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. So that's the amount, one million, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand.
So do I still have the floor? I, I need to question on, on those two figures that you just said.
Okay.
Were those repairs to the Barnett? Where did that money go?
Not the Barnett.
Okay.
Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. So just for clarification, are you asking for us to authorize funding up to one point, you know, or do you want to round it to one-point-three? So as the bills come in, it, it just doesn't exceed that one-point-three, or do you want it at the one-point-three-two?
Up to one-point-three-two million. One million, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand.
I'm fine with that, if the motion maker and second are, are in agreement with that number.
Okay. All right. All in favor of this item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, forty-nine, is acknowledgement of the pending repair or remodel expenses at the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center, and designate the Vision account the primary funding source for these expenses in accordance with Rapid City Municipal Code three dot one six dot zero nine zero. And for further explanation on this item, there is an ordinance on the books that dictates how the Vision Fund process is to proceed, and we're at the end of one five-year plan and in need to make a new five-year plan according to the ordinance. There is a paragraph in that ordinance that indicates that if there are pending expenses for the repair or remodel of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center, that we can not appoint a nine-member citizen committee to vet new proposals for Vision Funds. Now, we know that there are pending expenses for the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center, we don't know exactly how much, but it is believed, there's no reason not to believe at this point, that the Barnett Arena, at the very minimum, will require significant expense to bring that building at least up to ADA compliance, at the very minimum. So we can estimate tens of million dollars. As Mr. Weifenbach spoke earlier, one of the figures thrown around for ADA issues was about thirty-five million dollars. So we are ninety or a hundred and twenty days or a hundred and eighty days away from having solid information on exactly what the expenses at the Civic Center will be. So, in light of that, it was my determination that I should ask the council to just simply declare that expenses are pending, and that if they are believed to be what we think they are, tens of millions of dollars, that the Vision Fund would be the primary funding source, not necessarily the sole source, and nor does this mean that no other projects will ever be funded. This essentially allows us to forego the assembly of the nine-person committee, go into the, beginning the new five-year plan without the committee, and there would be nothing stopping the council from six or nine months or twelve months from now reestablishing that committee and going through that process at that time. So this is not a ploy to exclude everyone else from the Vision process, okay? So this item was heard at Legal Finance, and it was recommended to take this to the council meeting without recommendation. Is there a motion? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple other questions before entertaining a motion, so I'm not prepared to make a motion at this time. So may I direct my questions to the city attorney, Joel Adine, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So Joel, if I remember the ordinance, and I'm just asking you to refresh my memory, not only does the ordinance call when we do prepare a five-year plan for other considerations outside of any modifications to the Civic Center complex, Barnett Arena, and otherwise, there was to be a citizens committee, but in tandem, staff was also going to prepare any projects that would come forward for the Vision Fund money. So by designating or acknowledging, as the mayor's asking the city council to do now, neither the staff nor a nine-person citizen committee would work on or bring forward any projects for the Vision Fund until we see what the potential ADA fixes and/or remodeling of the Civic Center complex would be. So we, the city council would then be able to form the Vision Committee later on and appoint that nine-member committee, or have the mayor appoint that nine, and staff would start working on their potential projects at the same time. Is that correct?
Yes, I don't believe that it's the mayor's intent, from the discussions that we've had at the director level, to bring forward city projects other than the Civic Center looking for Vision Fund money until such time as we know what the cost of the Civic Center is and that is considered. You know, we obviously, as staff, are always working on projects and trying to figure out how to fund them, but no, we aren't planning on bringing forward separate from the citizen committee. My understanding from the discussions we've had is that the purpose is simply, under the ordinance, the council is required to form the citizen committee by the end of this June, so it is to hold off forming the citizens committee until such time as the mayor's task force has completed its work and has a better sense of what the costs and what their recommendations are gonna be.
So then, just for clarification, what, the interpretation that I have, and just correct me if you see that I'm going down the wrong road here, is that the mayor is just asking the city council really just to delay the formation until we have some good numbers as far as what the Civic Center task force is coming back with?
Correct.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
And I'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and my first question really is directed to you, sir, on this particular item. My question would be, with the task force on the Civic Center, do we have any, I don't want you to ballpark it, but I guess I'm asking you to ballpark it, but date when we think the task force is going to come back on the Civic Center? Do we have an idea yet on that?
I could ballpark ninety days.
Ninety days? Okay. Thank you. My comments really about this one is, you know, as I was sitting here, I was thinking about why we wouldn't be able to appoint the nine-person committee and run it parallel with what's coming back from the task force, knowing the length of time, for those of us who've been through a five-year plan, picking, you know, having the committee vet out the ideas that are coming forward from the community, and then the council debating and dealing with those recommendations from the nine-person committee from the community. I was hoping that maybe, given that amount of time that it's going to take, anywhere from six months to at least, you know, even more than a year, I mean, I know some of them have taken quite some time, that we might not be able to at least appoint this committee from the community and run them parallel, knowing that whatever we're going to decide is definitely not going to be near the costs that was previously field of the hundred and eighty million dollar principal amount. But just given the amount of time that it takes to vet potential proposals for Vision Funds, I thought maybe we could run them in parallel, especially now given the fact that it may be as close as ninety days, that we have some recommendation on the Civic Center. So I just wanted to air that, and maybe we want to debate that and talk about that. Otherwise, I'm willing to support where we're at, but I'd like to see the fact that it's gonna take quite some time to get the new proposals coming from the community committee group, maybe we could run them parallel. I yield.
Hey, I'll clarify on my answer to, I believe your question was, how long before we get ADA required, or ADA? Was that the question?
No, Mr. Mayor, it was really recommendations on what's gonna come back on the Barnett Center, how long are we out with that? So if your answer is different and you have a different feel for that, I think, at least for myself or the council, that would be valuable, I think.
Okay. I think that we'll have the ADA assessment done within ninety days. The next assessment that's on the menu, is on the plan at this point, is to assess any safety issues that are unaddressed at the Barnett at this point, and any other modifications to the building that will increase marketability or ease of use, that sort of thing. And then with those two, with those two items in hand, then I think it would be negligent not to weigh all of the options at that time. And I know there's a lot of talk about the hundred and eighty million dollar building, a lot of talk about the citizens' vote, I'm well aware of all those things, but I think it would be negligent to have all of the information in our hands that we're going to learn from the ADA assessment and from the safety and marketability assessment, and not run the numbers against some type of possible proposal to increase seating or make some major renovation to that building. I have a lot of issues with the process that occurred a year or two ago, apparently about sixty percent of the voters did as well. And so it's my intent, through this process with the Civic Center task force, to produce facts and evidence that will demonstrate whatever the need is and what the need isn't. So this will be a very public process, there'll be no, holding no cards close, there's no hidden agenda. So I would say for the entire process with this task force to run its course, I would say that we're probably looking at a minimum of six months and a maximum of twelve months. So, sorry for the miscommunication there. And I'll go to Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the task forces that you're working with, I appreciate what they've done, and I think they're heading in the right direction, but the whole conversation begs the question of spending, we spent seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on a report that we have zero faith in. So now we're back at square one, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayor, about the issues with the process. Myself and two other council people spent maybe an hour, so two hours, on the phone with the people that did the ADA review, and tried to get that ADA review introduced to this dais during the whole process of the three hundred and eighty million dollar new build with the cost estimate ranging anywhere from thirty to seventy million dollars with no avail. So if I'm going on, it's just maybe a little bit of vindication, or maybe a little bit of teaching the public about how some of this process may work. And it was unfortunate that the people that did the ADA review weren't heard. I'm hoping that they do get heard now, and they can tell you what program accessibility is, what that means versus accessibility, because in people's minds, it is actually two different things. The accessibility to programs that the Civic Center puts on, I've had several conversations with Mr. Balter, who's sitting here in the front now. If there's a person who has special needs for ADA or whatever they are, contact the Civic Center office, he will accommodate you. We do not want to shut anybody out of this process, that is our goal from the very beginning. So, thank you.
Jerry Wright.
Hey, Mayor, I just want to add that the step tonight is appropriate, and I know we need to take some time without locking down process, committing funds, even if it's over a slower period of time, but we do not know at this point the cost or the extent of what we're going to do, or the desired terms, interest or duration of finance, and I think those are all decisions that we need to make before we make a decision of how we're gonna spend the rest of money, if we are, we can, and whatever happens. So I support the issue, there are a lot of issues that need to be answered before we can, as a council, I think, make a decision to proceed with spending Vision Funds on other things other than the Civic Center, until we find out where we're at. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off with making a motion to approve. If I get a second, I'd like to keep the floor. I just, I mean, I respect everybody's opinion up here that's talked, I don't disagree with anybody. I just think, I mean, if we approve this motion, we just park the money for a while. I'm not trying to circumvent anybody's rights to bring a Vision project forward, but one thing I did think I learned during that last deal is that not having any cash on hand and not having any equity to put into that project was a rub. And so I really don't, I mean, this money's just gonna build for a while until we decide what to do, and I don't think anybody's gonna be mad at us if we have some cash to put towards a project, and, you know, and not to say that once we have a project, that all the cash will go to the Civic Center. I mean, it'll all have to be vetted out at the time. But I really hate to open up a Vision round right now, I mean, I just think that money will look like a turtle that died over an anthill. I mean, it just, well, I just think patience and we'll pay dividends here, and let's build a little money and buy ourselves another six months or whatever the mayor needs and see what we're looking at. Thanks.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know who I direct this question to, but I believe that the motion that's on the floor right now, there really is no timeline except for the five years on the Vision Fund, so we could actually prolong it five years, correct, the way it is right now?
Technically, that seems true.
And I do have just a little issue with that. I would like to see some kind of a timeframe on this, at least. I didn't like, from the beginning, putting the Vision Funds on hold for a year, even though it's worked out well. We're building some money up there, I think it's gonna be good to have this extra money for the Civic Center, we're gonna need it, and at least we're getting some of these things done now. I could live with putting a year, another year of holding off on the Vision Funds, but without a timeframe on it, you know, councils come and go, we have elections, you don't know where that's gonna be without putting a timeframe on it. So even though I do believe that we need to hold off on Vision funding right now, I think that Brad said it very well, that this is not a good time to start a new round with everything that's in the pipeline. So with what's on, the motion that's on the floor right now, I cannot, I cannot vote for it. If somebody wants to put some kind of a timeline on it, I'd be happy to vote on it.
Okay, motion on the floor is for approval. Go back to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to amend the current item to include a timeframe to a maximum of eighteen months, if I can get a second. Thank you, Mayor, and I just, I think that's very good. Alderman Roberts, I appreciate that, pointing out that particular fact, and I think, given the mayor saying six to twelve months, I would say eighteen months is plenty of time to run over, if we will, to come back with those final recommendations on the Barnett Center and the rest of what needs to be done in renovation, so I will support the amendment. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Just let me offer, just let me offer this as something to consider. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and in the letter I wrote to the council, I proposed two options, one of which was to modify the ordinance timeline for initiating the citizen committee, and I think that we could make a tweak, although it takes two readings and seems like a big deal, we could make a tweak to that ordinance and just change the date for one year later. That means that the same requirements in the ordinance would be required in 2017 instead of 2016. That would put it up exactly one year, I'm pretty confident. But the motion on the floor now is to extend the deadline by a maximum of eighteen months, that works too. I just wanted you to hear that and think about that. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, because that, Alderman Laurenti's motion, it just begs the question, what are we extending? Are we extending the formation of the citizens committee to start that process? So if you're saying eighteen months out, we're saying we need the new date for the mayor to form that nine-member citizen committee is October first of 2017? I mean, when you're saying extending, I'm looking either for a date and I'm looking for an action. I mean, what is your intention by offering an eighteen-month timeframe?
That is my intention, Alderman Scott, is to halt off forming the committee for eighteen months to give the task force the time to come back with their final recommendations for the Civic Center, for the Barnett Arena as a whole. So yeah, that was my intention.
Thank you. So then, Mayor, if you don't mind, I have a question for the city attorney.
Go ahead.
So Joel, as the mayor's brought up, the ordinance currently has that stipulation, by the city council just making this motion today, do we need to change the ordinance with two readings, or can we just carry this recommendation based on the motion made tonight to extend the date of forming the nine-member- to extend the date of forming the nine-member citizen committee?
I think you could do either. I think if you do it by ordinance, you maybe give yourself more flexibility if you just do it by the resolution tonight, but however the council wants to do it, I think either way is appropriate.
Thank you. So Alderman Laurenti, is October 1st your date? I'm just looking for a date there.
That works for me, if that works for you.
October 1st, 2017, the mayor needs to form a citizens committee if not formed prior to that.
Agreed.
I can support that motion. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this is a new motion, but the conversation seems a little cyclic to me because was the Civic Center vetted by a nine-person committee anyway? Originally? So, I mean, the council can make any decision they want. It's the point of getting to, that's what got us into this place, in this situation in the first place. The council made a decision to spend 380 million bucks. It wasn't vetted by any nine, now we're saying we can't have a nine-person committee. Seems like I'm one hand clapping or something. I'm not sure that I get this, but I think I'm on Mars again. I listen to these conversations, and I just don't get it, Mr. Mayor. If you can answer that, I'd...
I can answer. I think I can answer it. By not appointing the nine-member committee, we won't, during this limbo period, be bringing in groups and spending their time and effort making proposals and having the nine-person committee coming up with a priority list, not knowing if there's a dollar or $100 left to spend.
Mr. Mayor, okay, I understand, that's exactly the way I understood it, which I feel is disingenuous to our citizens. I really do. I thought it was that way from the very beginning. I've been in on some of these, and we've seen some great projects come through our citizens committee. If they want the Civic Center, the nine-person committee could vet it and let it happen. Once they get the facts and the information from the process that you're going through, they can digest that, if that's the process this council wants. If the council doesn't want that process, if they want me, as an elected citizen, to make that decision, I can handle that too. But to tell the people out here that we don't really want your input, only if we want your input, makes no sense to me. It's an argument that just, it's like a dog chasing his tail, so I just, if we're going to have a nine-person committee, let's have it. If we're not, let's don't have it. But I'm not committing to any Civic Center until I, you know, see what the facts are to come back, and if someone can change my mind, I think this conversation's gone awry.
Okay, Jerry Wright.
Well, this is to delay it until October 1st, 2017, the Citizens Committee on Recommending Projects for the Vision Fund. That's one issue, correct? Now, and that is the way the ordinance is written, and I can support that. I assume what Ron is, excuse me, Councilman Wyffenbach's saying is, do we want another ordinance that establishes a citizens advisory committee and what we do with the Civic Center? That's another effort. Is that what you want, Ron?
No, Mr. Wright, what I said is that the council made an ordinance to pass the Civic Center, but now they're telling the people that they don't want, you don't want their input if we do this going forward in a nine-person committee. That's the way I'm seeing this, because...
So the question I have is, do you want to see a nine-person citizens committee put together by ordinance to establish what we're going to do with the Civic Center?
That'd be absolutely perfect for me.
Then it needs to come back as a separate issue, then.
Either way, just don't tell the people you're going to do one thing or do something different, so...
Okay, we'll go to Chad Lewis now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess something that we need to consider is we are under the gun with the Department of Justice agreement, where we're supposed to be doing something. I know we're working on the initial part of it, but we've got to also make some decisions and get going on that, so I think that's probably prudent for us not to be going out and soliciting other projects until we have a plan going forward with the Barnett, because the Barnett's probably the biggest part of this equation as far as the Civic Center goes. Until we can get something figured out with that, I don't think we can possibly go ahead and say we're going to fund whatever X, Y, and Z projects are out there. I also remember the Civic Center is the project that probably pays for most of those projects in the long run, the sales tax revenue, so I think we need to go forward, and I think it's prudent what we're doing. I understand the public's not involved directly in this situation, but they were last time they referred it, because they didn't like our decision, so they can always do that again if they don't like what we did again, but I think at this point, we're trying our best to do something we got to. We have no choice. We have an agreement with the Department of Justice. We said we'd do something, and we're working on that, so just going forward. Thank you.
Okay, Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you clarify the motion?
I believe the motion is to delay the appointment of the nine-person committee, and therefore the citizen vetting process, or any vetting process for vision funds, until October 1st, 2017, at the latest.
Okay, I'm familiar with many great projects that are waiting for vision funds at this time, and I know they're going to be frustrated by this delay, but I am going to vote in favor of it, because I think it's the most prudent thing to do, as Chad said, with the Department of Justice and with your recommendation. I think it's the best thing we can do at this time.
Okay, and I'm well aware, the feeling among the community and the council is to not exclude citizens from this vision process, to not tie up the vision funds forever on one project, and I won't be bringing anything of the nature. Although this is an eighteen-month extension on the deadline, if we're done in six months, I'll be back in six months with recommendations. So, that's the motion on the floor. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, on public hearing items, items 50 through 59, we're going to open the public hearing, public comment time here on items 50 through 59. Note to all the speakers, there's a few of you, that you'll all have a maximum of three minutes to make your point. You have these lights up here to keep your eye on, and we will go first on item number 54 to Gina Parkhurst.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Gina Parkhurst, and I live in Ward 3. I would like to comment on the proposed TIF, T-I-F, for Black Hills Corp.'s new office As you know, Black Hills Corp. is not hurting financially. Their stock price is near a 52-week high at about $60, way up from its $36 low. They have a monopoly. They have undue influence to squash any competition from other companies and even individual homeowners with solar systems. They tried to impose a surcharge on such individuals with solar systems recently. I would also point out that they strongly influence the laws and regulations that govern energy producers in this state, which results in an unfree market situation, since companies live and die based on regulations they must follow. I thought a conservative state would be against corporate welfare and against a rigged marketplace, so I would urge you to think carefully before approving this TIF for Black Hills Corporation. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Ed McLaughlin, also on item number 54.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Ed McLaughlin. I am speaking for myself personally. I'm a member of Ward 5. The tax increment district has been a very valuable tool here in Rapid City. It's been used extensively, and I feel that it has done an excellent job of improving the economic conditions of Rapid City. It's served Rapid City well. However, a blighted area is one of the most and major requirements of such a tool, and needs to be considered when approving such a district. In my opinion, this area does not meet the intent of this funding approach, since the proposed area certainly is not a blighted area. Therefore, I would respectfully request that you do not approve this item.
Thank you. And now Don Frankenfeld on item 54.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Sorry, my voice is going, which should be a blessing to all. My name is Don Frankenfeld. I'm in Ward 5, and I too oppose this particular TIF. Many of you have heard some variation of my comments, I suppose, ad nauseam over the years. In the legislature, long, long ago, I wrote the TIF law. I believed then and believe now that tax increment financing is a useful tool, something that an economic development officer should have in his or her quiver to be used at the appropriate time. I think it's awfully tempting to use it in a more profligate way, and I think that's an example of what we're seeing now with Black Hills Power's proposal. There are good TIFs, I think particularly in Rapid City, of the Founder's Park TIF, which did address a blighted area and allowed it to be redeveloped in a way that it probably would not have been possible before. But as Gina said, Black Hills Power is not a poor corporation. They're a rich corporation, and a TIF is not a costless provision. It has a cost. I term it often corporate welfare. I know that that can be an incendiary term. It is certainly a subsidy to whoever it is that receives that TIF. Just to add a couple of statistics to what Gina mentioned, their market value today is $3 billion, $51 million. Their dividend is $1.68 million. They've grown about 11% per year. They have $4.6 billion in assets. And just as an example, Mr. Emery, who I think is a good manager, and he deserves to be well-paid, in 1915, 2015, I am old, his compensation was $4,131,502. The year before, it was $6,86,633. Good people over there, good citizens. This is a good project. It's a project that is not, by any reasonable measure, incremental. You can make an argument that it will create a few jobs. I think Mayor Allender's letter to the council didn't really talk about creating jobs. It talked about bringing jobs to Rapid City a little more quickly than would otherwise be the case, without any specification of exactly what that means. That's nice. They're a rational actor. If they want to bring people to Rapid City, they will do so, because it's in their best interest, and they can afford it. There is no reason to subsidize them to the extent of $6 million. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Kent Haig.
My name is Kent Haig. I'm one of the owners of Altiterr Development Company. That's the developer portion of TIF, the original TIF 70. And under South Dakota statute, the original bondholder slash developer, if you will, is required to provide its consent or agree that any overlay is to take place. My point here is not to speak for or against, but to simply say that that consent is not being withheld, for what it's worth. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Haig, would you mind repeating the last part?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the proposal. Mr. Haig, I didn't hear what you said. Your consent is not being withheld?
That's correct. We consent to the overlay, should that be the decision of the council.
Thank you for repeating that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, Don Purdue. Would you like to speak?
Everything's been said very well.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to Jafar Karim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak before you here tonight. My name is Jafar Karim. I am Director of Corporate Affairs for Black Hills Corporation. I live here and work here in Rapid City, South Dakota, and we appreciate your time to consider our proposal to bring more jobs to Rapid City. And we understand that the request for tax increment financing is not one to be taken lightly. We've attempted to do this in a very thoughtful way, and one that's tied to being able to bring jobs to Rapid City. And as we've talked about in the other pieces of the process we've been through, we've been through four levels of review so far here in the city, this has hinged upon the opportunity to create economic development. So that goes back to state statute, which allows for TIFs to be used for economic development purposes in addition to blighted purposes and redevelopment as well. And so that's why we're here today. So the request is to be able to build out at our new headquarters an additional 150 spaces. And consistent with the state requirements, we would create at a minimum of 50 jobs, but we would be looking to bring more jobs here over time as well. And so we think this is an excellent opportunity, and I know you're familiar, I'm sure, with a little bit of who we are and how we've changed through the years and how we've grown. So we've grown by about 19 times in terms of the numbers of customers we serve, and yet our roots are still here in the Black Hills in South Dakota. We have chosen to make Rapid City our headquarters for the eight states and the customers, the utilities we serve across that expanse, and it does go across several, over 1,000 miles between our territory, and yet we're still looking to provide that opportunity here. So we do have opportunities before us to be able to create more jobs, to stimulate more development along the I-16, I'm sorry, around the US-16 catchrun area and what we're calling the Rushmore Gateway Corridor area, to be able to stimulate more growth to our city. Today, our approximately 500 employees contribute $81 million annually to the local economy. So if you extrapolate that and look at, if we say just have, just for 50 jobs more, that translates to about $8.1 million annually to our local economy. And so that's the type of potential that we're talking about. That doesn't cover even the construction phase of our project and what that means as well. So there are many benefits to the public. The primary ones, though, are about helping to stimulate our economy here in Rapid City to be able to create those additional jobs and to be able to pave way for more development over the course of time. And I thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to stand by for questions.
Thank you. Now on the same item, Jay Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jay Davis. I'm a resident of Ward 1. I would ask you not to approve the TIF for Black Hills Corporation. As honorable members of this council, if you are sincerely opposed to corporate welfare, if you're sincerely opposed to welfare for the rich, then that's the only consistent way to vote. This is not an exercise in free enterprise. As has been pointed out, this is a highly regulated monopoly. In fact, under state law, Black Hills Corp. has a guaranteed rate of return, so if their profit level starts to drop below a certain percent, they can come back to the Public Utilities Commission and virtually demand a rate increase to bring their profit back up to the desirable range. The purpose of the TIF statute, as former Senator Frankenfeld stated, was to provide partnerships to promote economic development in blighted areas. I would submit to you that the intersection of Catron and US Highway 16 is not a blighted area, it's a booming area. If some entrepreneur was coming in and developing something positive in terms of low-income housing, affordable housing, where the Idlewild now sits, that would clearly be an effort to promote economic development in a blighted area. This is not. You've heard a citation from Mr. Karim about the jobs that this will provide. Do you honestly believe those jobs won't be here, or this new headquarters will not be built if they don't get the tax... be built if they don't get the tax break, which, by the way, falls harder on the schools, the Rapid City area schools, than it does on the city of Rapid City or on Pennington County? If they get this tax break, it's unwarranted. Somebody's going to have to pay for this. And low-income, and moderate income, and upper-middle income taxpayers in the city of Rapid City should not be subsidizing an investor-owned utility which has an absolute monopoly. If I become dissatisfied with the service and product that I receive from Black Hills Corp., it's not as though I can unhook and get my electricity from somewhere else. The company has grown geometrically, that's true, because they've creatively gone about acquiring the assets of smaller and weaker investor-owned utilities in other states. That may be an admirable business strategy, which necessitates a larger corporate headquarters. But if you believe this is coming anyway, and that this is just a handout, which costs every other taxpayer, and in particular, costs our schools, by depriving them of revenue that they should be receiving, then this isn't just stretching the purpose of the TIF statute, it's unconscionably breaking it. So, I would implore you not to approve a TIF for the proposed project for Black Hills Corporation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, on the same item, we'll go to Todd Meyer Henry.
Good evening. I'm Todd Meyer Henry. I've been retained by Black Hills Corporation to consult on tax increment districts. And I'll basically give you an overview. In 1978, the tax increment law was created. In 1983, there was a major amendment, and at that time, my father was Attorney General, and he was basically directed to take the 1983 tax increment laws and go litigate every issue that possibly could come up, so that we could get a set of laws that was the law of the land with regards to tax increment district. And since 1983, that has been our tax increment statute until 2011, when I was approached in 2010 and asked to modify or write a modification for our tax increment law. We had many, many cities across the state who said, you know, this blight issue hinders us in economic development. We have companies, or companies in South Dakota, and they want to locate in a certain area, most likely the industrial park, which is not blighted in most of our communities. And so, that was a hindrance for them to use tax increment financing as an incentive to local companies. So, what we did is we modified a statute that says you can be blighted and have a tax increment district, but you can also, if more than 50 percent of the district will experience economic development, then you can have a tax increment district for economic development. The second major portion that was changed in the economic development law is this came, our original economic development law came out of urban renewal. Think of the south side of Chicago. When cities and the Rust Belt were going under, this was a mechanism, they could come in, condemn whole areas of rundown areas, usually in downtown areas, knock them down, put public infrastructure in. So, the project costs originally with tax increment district law was just what we would think of as land acquisition, demolition, engineering fees, other service fees, cost of construction of public buildings, and it basically was public works. And what the 2011 law did was added a grant section, or incentives, which are up to the discretion of the governing body. So, it gave governing bodies the discretion to use incentives to assist governments. The reasoning was, a number of our communities wanted to keep entities that were good businesses in their community. They wanted to provide some type of incentive so that they would expand their existing plants, or, like in peer, expand their existing hotels, so the legislature would have a better, those are actually two tax increment districts, the Ramcota and the, what's the one next to it? With the red rose, I never, so that would locate there. We've had other, like Jack Links, they did a tax increment district to help their expansion, and they actually used it to expand their lagoon. We've had CNA in Sioux Falls assisted that entity from moving from one part of downtown Sioux Falls to locate in the East Bank. And so, it's been used since 2011 for those purposes.
Thank you. And now, we're on to items 57 and 58, and we'll go first to Nathan Denholm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be attempting to use a picture here to illustrate a point or two in amendment. My name is Nathan Denham. I live in Freedom Court. That's right here. And that didn't work very well. Okay, right here. My house is right here. This is the proposed building that West Hills wants to build. I want to answer some things that were said by the CEO of West Hills when he spoke after me last time. This is decidedly not a park. He wants to talk about it being park-like. Parks don't have big buildings full of people living in them. They also are not built on private land. I'm sure that if people started coming to West Hills Village with vans full of kids wanting to have soccer practice, they would find out it's not a park. He has said that they will make this building look residential. Look at the size of it compared to my home. This building is, in its current incarnation, is 300 feet long, 265 feet deep. And Mr. Reinicki also said that it was being built as a one-story building. At this corner of the building is the only place it'll be one story. At the northeast corner, over here, it's going to have a drive-out garage. That means that the basement floor level has to be at grade. And at this corner, they intend to have a walkout basement. That means the basement floor will be at grade. The grade there is 27 and a half feet that they're proposing for their basement floor. It's right on this plan. You can't read it, because it's too small. My driveway has a contour line running through it that's at 3,320 feet. Their basement is at 3,327 and a half. Mr. Reinicki stated that the main floor level of this building would be near the main floor level of the houses to the east. As you can see, there's not going to be any houses to the east in Freedom Court except mine. And my floor level is at about the 3,331 level, one foot above my driveway. His main floor, according to his design people, will be 14 feet above his basement floor level. In other words, it'll be 10 feet above my floor level, two feet above my ceiling level. He talked about being a good neighbor. That's a matter of opinion, and we don't agree on that opinion. This building is going to be a two-story building of commercial heights, 26-foot wall to the eve, as opposed to a residential height of around 18 feet. The overall height of this building should be 38 feet on these south wings with a 412 pitch, 35 feet if it's a 312 pitch. It's going to be a building this big when you drive up Freedom Court, with a home this big on the other side of the court. I don't believe he can make a smooth transition between these buildings. What you're saying to me, if you vote for this, is that I have two choices. I can choose to like what's being done here, or I can move. If I move, it incurs expenses, and what that means is that it's in violation of Rapid City ordinance, because it says in the ordinance, when you rezone something, it should not have adverse effects on other parts of the city. I'm another part of the city. I'm right across the court from him. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And now, on the same item, 59, we'll go to Kathy Peterson.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Peterson, and I'm speaking in regards to the initial plan development overlay application in conjunction with the item 59 rezoning. As you all know, US Highway 16 is an entryway for travelers entering the community from the south, as well as a gateway for visitors traveling from Rapid City to Mount Rushmore and the Black Hills area. At one time, there was a US Highway 16 entryway overlay for this area. It was part of the future land use, excuse me, future land use plan. This overlay ran from the southern city area boundary to 500 feet north of the intersection with Catron Boulevard right away. There were six goals listed with this overlay, but there are two that come to mind when thinking about the development of this three-plus-story, 160-unit apartment. Create an attractive and inviting environment along the corridor, and preserve the existing vistas of prairie land to the east and the Black Hills to the west by maintaining openness along the corridor. One of the recommendations of this overlay was that all structures shall have a single-story construction to maximize and protect the views to both the east and the west of the Highway 16 roadway. I don't know when this overlay was removed from the Highway 16 area, but we do feel it was a loss when it was removed, as it incorporated the very best in mind for that entire area, in addition to preserving the amazing and hard-to-find views and vistas that are so enjoyed by residents as well as visitors to our area. While we're sure the Higgs are trying to have a positive influence on the region with aesthetics in regards to the gateway to our city, these three-plus-story apartment units will certainly change the entire look of this section of the Highway 16 corridor. It will definitely not be preserving the existing views that make the gateway to Rapid City so beautiful and unique. If you take a look at apartment buildings being built in Rapid City, for example, the Copper Ridge Apartments that have been built south of the Highway 16 fire station, you can see how height obstructs views and dramatically impacts this whole area. While we're not asking that these apartments be a single-story construction, although this would maximize and protect the views both east and west of Highway 16, we would ask that you would please consider limiting the height to no more than two stories to create an attractive and inviting environment along the corridor, and preserve the amazing and unique views and openness that make Rapid City such a wonderful place to live and visit from becoming a lost asset. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we're going to go back to item 57, 58, Darrell Reinicki.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As we discussed before, our intention of use of this property will include a complete drainage review that the city will also be involved in. And as we mentioned last time, we've been in compliance with all drainage reviews for that, for that neighborhood, which we'll put a great deal of importance on. The landscaping, I think, around West Hills Village speaks for itself. We continue to do that same style of landscaping and green space protection around our facilities. With the acquisition of property that we have, we have ample space between any building in all the neighborhood to make sure we have this in mind as well. As we've mentioned before, this is a one-story building to the north with a walkout to the south, just as the topography there lends itself. It's on a slight decline hill. And the map that was furnished at this time is just a footprint. We have not begun design of the facility, and won't until such time we're able to take everyone's considerations into play. Kim Schmidt, if it's okay, will address the topography question.
Thank you for having this opportunity for us to talk. One thing I wanted to talk about was the elevation. Right now, we don't have set elevations, but the home next to Mr. Denholm is actually at a finished floor of 3,336. And the existing garages that sit on the West Hills property, which is at 3,338, so a little over two feet. We are proposing to put our finished floor of the main level of our facility roughly at that finished floor of the garages. So, we're going to be in that range of 3,338, 3,340. So, we are, our elevation-wise of our main floor is roughly at the houses next to Mr. Denholm's and some of the homes right around. And to address the walkout issue, the front will be at roughly a single story. As you wrap around to the east, like Mr. Reinicki mentioned, the natural slope of the ground starts to slope as we head to the south. And so, that east side, excuse me, a portion of that south side actually will start to become exposed. And so, by the time we hit that south side, it will have an appearance of a two-story, as well as where that drive-under garage happens, it will be at that two-story appearance level. But from the north and from the west, really, will be, the basement will be buried, and you'll see a single-story structure. We are in the process of going through the city planning, so we're following all the different submittal processes. We have the initial plan development right now, and we'll end up with a final plan development, which will give the Planning Commission opportunity to look at elevations and the entire project as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to call on Connie Lozot. Okay? Don't say I didn't try. That takes us through all of the speaker request forms, so we'll close the public hearing on items 50 through 59. Now, we'll go to consent public hearing items 50 through 53. Are there any motions on these items? Move to approve, and second on the consent items, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Takes us down to item number 54. Would you read that in, Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 54 is to approve a request by Black Hills Corporation to consider an application for a resolution to create a tax incremental district, and a resolution to approve a tax incremental district project plan for property generally described as being located southwest corner of the intersection of South US Highway 16 and Catron Boulevard. And I'll yield the floor, because I have, I'll listen to what my peers have to say.
Second. Any more motion to approve, and a second? Motion was by Lewis, and the second was by Jerry Wright. And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, thank you for someone making the motion. I will not be in support of the motion that's currently on the floor. When this property came before us for a TIF, I'm very, very complimentary of Black Hills Corp. retaining their corporate offices in Rapid City, and I am for the economic boon of bringing extra jobs to our area. My issue with the current incremental project plan is that this is for a building, or an extension on their building, but it also includes $2.8 million in finance charges. And that's the part that I can't really wrap my head around in accepting the taxpayer for our property taxes of the city and the county and the school districts paying for the finance charges on a construction project of a public, of a public utility building. And so, I would be in favor, or I could support, a TIF district that would actually support the original roughly $3 million to $3.2 million for this economic project. But as it stands, if the finance charges are going to be included in this, which is $2.8 million, I will not be able to support that at this time. The other thing is, is that I do know that when this was originally brought forward, we were looking, as far as leadership of city council, we kind of had a discussion on the potential that, we weren't sure if the TIF district was the best option for this. We were kind of looking at some other options. I know that the TIF district was looked at in, for encouragement, because this is an overlay on existing TIF, TIF 70, and TIF 70 could use some help in paying off the infrastructures that's currently in that incremental tax district. And of course, any economic, new construction would benefit and pay off that TIF faster. And so, I'm in favor of that as well, and I know that Black Hills Corp. has worked very diligently in making sure, because I know they also have a little twist in their taxation part two, is because they're centrally taxed, which means a lot of their tax dollars go to a central location and then get redistributed. And they have made an effort to make sure that the tax dollars generated by their construction of this building will come back to help pay off the tax of this building will come back to help pay off the tax incremental district, number 70, as well as this one. And again, I'm in support of that. This is, this is new, and this is different than a lot of the other TIFs we've done. I really have an issue with the finance charges being incorporated in this. And so I'd like to hear what the other peers have to say on the city council. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
I support this issue, and I, I do it with this thinking in mind. Number one, Black Hills Corp could have easily moved elsewhere. And they proved their good judgment and their good management and a good decision-making process to stay here. So I'm trusting their exercise and their judgment in this process, where they've come to us asking for assistance in this process, because the TIF is really our only existing tool that we as a city can use, in my opinion, for economic development that we have readily available. That's number one. Had they moved, the impact on our school system would have been catastrophic, would have been catastrophic to our community, lose 500 jobs. And I do believe that if they came to us, they have legitimate reason of doing this, and I support it. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I sit on the TIF committee, and I know Black Hills Corp has heard me speak on this, but some of the people here tonight and some of the council have not heard me speak, if they haven't listened to the TIF committee meeting, but I do not support this TIF, primarily because I believe it does not qualify under the "but for" statement. This TIF, which means that but for the TIF, this development wouldn't happen. There is nothing in this particular TIF, the funded project costs, there is nothing in the funded project costs that are regional in nature, absolutely none of it. All of it has more to do with the things that Black Hills Corporation wants to provide, sidewalks, bike path. I don't know who all that's for, but that's not a regional impact. The only thing that I see on this particular TIF that might have some regional impact is the water main oversizing. They're having to oversize that, and so there's a negotiation on what the development's going to pay and what the city's going to pay. But on a more, on a more, I guess, global stage for this TIF was what I said at the TIF committee meeting, was that what Black Hills Corporation is holding here, their spades, if you will, in their hand, is the 150 workspaces. They're going to complete the building. There's just 150 workspaces that they're saying they won't finish out if they don't get the TIF, which have nothing to do with the costs that are being covered on the TIF. So I'm a little puzzled with that. But I'm not surprised that they would use that, because for the community, they're thinking, they're trying to, you know, get them focused on those 150 jobs. Well, if they don't do it, it's 100. Well, they're building it, ladies and gentlemen. They're going to build it, because the fact of the matter is, bringing these jobs to Rapid City makes absolute economic sense for Black Hills Corporation to do that. And I'm glad that they're doing it. I'm happy that they're, they're doing this development here in Rapid City. I just don't believe that a company like Black Hills Corporation should create a burden for the current taxpayers, and that's what we're doing here. The rest of the taxpayers will have to support this $6.8 million during the life of that TIF. Somebody has to pay for the city services while this development's already done. And so that would be the rest of the taxpayers. There's a tremendous cost to the rest of the taxpayers. You know, Mr. Frankenfeld brought up the fact that he was one of the people that authored this. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Frankenfeld that this was a good idea for our state. In my opinion, I've been around politics for quite some time. I have my own opinion. But my understanding with TIFs is just that, that, I understand its origin, and it started back in the 50s. This isn't something new. California was doing them back in the late to mid 50s. And California has thousands of TIF districts. I don't know what the number is now, but it's in the thousands. It's over 1,000. And California is not in good shape financially. They're, they have issues, they've had billion-dollar deficit issues. So if TIFs were so great for revenue for a state or for a community, California should be flush. And I understand that spending has a lot to do with it well, but, as well, but that's the problem, is when you do something under good intention, which is what Mr. Frankenfeld did, and I think if it were strictly done, I would agree with him, that it would be a great, great thing to do for blighted areas. But unfortunately, government has proven time and time again that they will screw it up. And that's what we've done, because it's no longer a quiver. Rapid City no longer has it as in the quiver of economic development. We have a full automatic weapon, Mr. Frankenfeld and Rapid City with TIFs. And I will not support it, because I believe that Black Hills Corporation could be doing this on their own. They have chosen to create a burden for the taxpayer. You know, just because you can doesn't mean that you should. And I believe, unfortunately, that this is a matter of greed. I hate to say it, but it is welfare for the well-off, welfare for the rich. I've always said welfare for the well-off, but that's exactly what this is. And I understand people with money will influence elected officials in this city, in this state, in this country, and they've always influenced elections, because they're going to fund elections. And so I have no doubt that that's how this got started. Some very well-off people saw an opportunity to create their, to put development on the backs of the taxpayers and create more profit for themselves. That's the truth. That's the reality when we boil it down. And so I will not support this TIF. Thank you.
Now we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm hoping that at some point, if I go beyond five minutes, my colleagues will yield me some time, because it's an important issue for me, and it reminds me of why I said earlier, I'm from Mars, and I come in on these issues, and we're all over the board. I've spent time on the TIF committee with colleagues up here that are currently on the, on the dais. Stand on their desk, telling from the top of my, with the top of my lungs screaming, saying, hey, listen, man, this process needs to be changed. The process needs to be vetted. It's been needed to be changed for a long time, and it, for me, just to approve a TIF has been very sparse and few and far between. I've met with the people at Black Hills Corp, and the first question I asked them is, why is an organization your size paying dividends, all this BUC regulate, all this, whatever, all those questions? And they answered my questions, every one of them, pointedly, directly, didn't try to hide the A-ball from me. There's, they're not trying to say that they are creating 150 jobs. They're not saying that at all. They're saying they're creating 50 jobs, bringing 50 jobs in. Of those 50 jobs, the average salary, $85,000. If you just, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to, every chance I get, I'm going to beat people up on, on the analysis of these things, and there's a reason for that, and I'll get to that. But if you take $85,000 times 50 jobs, you get roughly about $4.2 million in payroll. We were looking, from this dais, we were looking at spending $380 million for 200 jobs for $8 an hour. That calculates to $3.2 million a year for the cost of $380 million directly out of a fund that would have been $13 million a year directly related to the taxpayers. The item came up about the blighted, because that's the first thing I said when I read this thing, what are we, crazy? It's not blighted area. And I wish that Mr. Meyer Henry had had the opportunity to present the state law change in 2011 that changed from being a rehab, urban redevelopment into an economic development tool for smaller cities or whatever. And even though Rapid City's 70,000, it's relatively a small city in the grand scheme of things, if you're competing against a city the size of Denver, Colorado, or maybe areas in Kansas City and Kansas. I, I'm not a firm believer in, in corporate welfare. I'm not a firm believer in any welfare when people don't earn their right to receive those benefits. Okay? So, and I'm sure that tomorrow, when we wake up and read the newspaper, and my colleagues or my constituents, some of them will agree with me, some of them will disagree with me, but the one thing I do know is they don't understand the sausage-making that took place behind the scenes that's going on right now. Some of the rules and laws have changed from, from blighted, no longer exists. We realize this is not blighted. What, what they're looking at is economic development tool. One of the issues that comes up when we talk about these things is not getting that transparency out to the people in the very beginning, to then you get to this end of the conversation where it was said to me from another person, you know what, Ron, 27 people looked at that thing before you did. Said, I get it, but I'm the guy that's got to make the final decision. And, and, and understanding that I've been working very hard and very diligently to try to make sense of it, try to, give me a reason not to do this. Then I look and I go, okay, what is, what is, what is the value of a job in Rapid City? Well, I don't think any of us up here are capable of extrapolating that information. I do think, though, that somewhere in the process, this has to take place. You know, what are, what are the items that you shouldn't, shouldn't pay for when you do a tax district? What are the ramifications for the rest of the taxpayers? My understanding from the answers that I got, not from Black Hills Energy, but from the staff, our staff, our city staff vetted this. They like it, they agree with, they think it makes sense. The process that we, we put in place, the TIF committee vetted it, they liked it, met all the rules and regulations. They passed it. The Planning Commission vetted it, liked it, ruled it, they passed it. And then it comes here and we're asking questions that we should have been asking way ahead of time, or if we didn't like the process, we should change the process. We should be able to sit up here and tell these people, before they get into this deal, what a job is worth to the citizens of Rapid City, because one thing I hear frequently is, you don't have enough good-paying jobs. This is 50 jobs that pay, on average, $85,000 a year. If I can get some, I wouldn't have started on my rampage, I'd have got cut off.
I've got all night.
All right, can I just yield some time to me, somebody, or?
Yeah, mine.
Thank you.
Whatever I got.
My decision didn't, doesn't come lightly. I, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Wright. My, my decision on this doesn't come easily. I've looked at all the avenues, I've looked at what is the cost to the rest of the taxpayers. My understanding is, is those won't be, won't be redistributed and, to the taxpayers in the districts, as of, some TIFs are. Some of them get, some of the, the cost to the school district gets redistributed to the school district in that, in that tax area. This, this won't happen. It was very clear to me and evident, whether I want to believe what they told me in that room or not, that this was a level of energy that took place to get this decision to happen in Rapid City. We can sit here and second-guess these people all we want and say, yep, they're, they're going to build it anyway, they're not going to have their corporate offers here. For me, for, for the TIF, and I, I believe in these guys, I think that they're professionals. I think that what they're telling me has credibility, and the fact is that they fought to keep this corporate headquarters here. Their corporate headquarters doesn't only include the people in the Black Hills region, but Colorado, Kansas, all the entities that someone so elegantly described that they gobbled up, and they're bringing those resources, and those peoples are going to get their salaries in Rapid City to spend in Rapid City. Okay? Is this hard to walk away from 50 jobs with the potential of another 100 jobs that pay $85,000 a year, when my constituents are telling me, Ron, we need better-paying jobs? There's only so much a government entity can do realistically. I can't, I can't go, I can only maybe go out and make one job for somebody. Here, we're looking at the opportunity to make a 50. What is it worth? I'm not sure. I'm not sure what it's worth. I mean, I, I look to my colleagues to tell me what you think this is worth. I'm not here to convince anybody, I'm just telling you the facts as I see them, as I know them. And as the rules have changed, it makes it hard for anybody that's developing anything to not come forward and say, you know what, I want a TIF, here's the process, go through it. They go through it, boom. Now I'm going to come up here and tell them, no. I remember that happened in a, in a case that's pretty relevant, the Chance Casino case, when it was a nine-to-one vote. I don't like casinos, but I voted for it, because they met all the, all the stipulations, regulations up to that point. And I had to vote for it, and it went to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court said you were arbitrary and capricious in your decision-making. Boom, they overturned our decision. With that being said, I appreciate the yielding of the time, and I'll listen to my colleagues before I make my final decision. Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's tis the season to be elected, and of course, I'm not running, so hold your applause. But the idea here is that, you know, everybody up here, and it's been said before, always promises, create new jobs, create higher-paying jobs, yada, yada, yada. We all talk about it constantly. And as my colleague just said, none of us actually create a job, we create an environment to create jobs. We don't actually stand up here and create any, any, any jobs outside, maybe government jobs. But what we do do is we, you know, we try to publicly stand up and say things are good. And that's what we need to do, is we need to be behind things when they come forward. We need to pick things apart, we need to throw roadblocks up publicly. If you have concerns about this stuff, fine, go talk to the people behind the scenes, but I think that it's, why it's important to keep your constituents informed about your viewpoints. I don't think we need to sit here and deride companies and call it corporate welfare or anything else like that, because it's just not right. I think these people are, have been great partners for our community. They've, they've brought in tons of jobs already. I mean, Rapid City has transformed already a little bit, just because the number of people that have, are able to get higher-paying jobs, it's kept some people around here that would have left. You know, they've done nothing but be a good partner for this community. And, you know, everybody talks about creating jobs, but look at Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls has all kinds of high-paying professional jobs. And I'm the young pup on, on the council, so someone can probably correct me, but I know that Citibank and all those corporate, corporate cards wanted to come here originally back in the day, and I remember this since I was a kid, but they wanted to come here, and they, all they were asking for is some tax breaks, at the times, I recall, like, I'm not sure exactly what they were asking for, but it was some concessions from the city, and we said, no. And they wanted to come to Rapid City, and so they went to Sioux Falls. Well, look what's done for Sioux Falls. And we could have, we could have had the same jobs here and would have, you know, been a little different scene for people who want to have higher-paying jobs. Well, now we're sitting here with a company that wants to bring in corporate headquarters. Folks, this isn't about Black Hills Energy, but as much as I love the company, I think they've done a great job, it's about a positive attitude and showing companies, we need to come, you can come to Rapid City, we're going to work with you. Yeah, so they're getting some money. To what benefit? I mean, when they built the railroads across America, the guys that did that got 10 square miles and a mile for every, you know, for every, for every mile they built, and they got 100, 400 feet either side of the railroads. What did it do for America? It made a couple of guys really rich, and it made the rest of the country really rich in the long run. You got to think, you got to think in the future, man. You can't just sit here and, well, this company's going to make this much money, and these guys are all, you know, getting rich, and this is all about the rich people. I mean, come on, that's not the way this works. This is about providing environments, encouraging people to come here, to start their companies, and, and hopefully bring more people, and sending a message to the general corporate world out there, that Rapid City is open for business. Quit throwing up roadblocks and being negative about it. I'm not saying you shouldn't scrutinize things, but we're not talking about ExxonMobil coming in here and getting, you know, multi-billion-dollar tax break. We're talking about three, four million dollars, well, five, I guess, six million dollars at this point, with some, including the finance charges. But they're bringing in, you know, they're bringing in a corporate headquarters, and hopefully they'll encourage other people to do the same. You know, as far as, you know, TIFs being, the schools getting screwed in the TIFs, that doesn't, doesn't work that way completely. They get the original amount they're still were getting, they just don't get part of the increment. Well, that's, you know, that's, well, then, but they will when that, when that increment pays off, and they'll start to gain the money again. And it, you know, it's, it's just overall, it's good for the community, I think. And, you know, talking about California, I mean, California's broke because of their pension problems with their government employees. We won't get into that right now, I don't want to anger anybody in the police department, the fire department. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, we could, we could easily make this an argument about a lot of things, but I think we need to do is sit up here and positively say, hey, bring your business to Rapid City. And if you're willing to bring investment, we're going to try to reward you. And yeah, so short-term, you guys make some money, big deal. I don't care how much the corporate, the headquarters guy makes at Black Hills Energy, I'm sure he's earned it somewhere along the way, and, you know, he's not, he's not flipping burgers, he's responsible for a multi-billion-dollar corporation or million-dollar corporation, I don't know exactly what you guys' revenue is, but this is America, man. I mean, Bernie Sanders aside, this is what we're supposed to do, okay? And this is how we're supposed, we're supposed to make money, we're supposed to be positive business people, we're supposed to try to create jobs, and that's what we're doing up here, and I'm, that's why I'm supporting this, you know? So they, someone will get a tax break along the way, make a little extra money, I don't care. In the long run, it's better for the community, that's my opinion, but, like I said, I'm not running against, I don't really care.
Okay, thanks for that. And we don't, we don't need to try to one-up the Bernie Sanders comment, let's leave that on television where it belongs. Now we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Now we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for allowing me to get some composure back here. Just, just wanted to address the folks that came forward with the opposing the arguments for the TIF. I just wanted to applaud you folks for articulating it and being very civil about your opposition. However, most of what I've been able to read and the concerns that have been raised by the opposition to this TIF, I don't know that we have the forum, or the format, or the legality, or whatever you want to use for the term, to be able to address those issues. So, the TIF is the only tool that I'm aware of, that we have in the toolbox that we can use. There is no rules or regulations that I've read through the TIFs, or even in the modifications to the, the TIF laws and how that reads, to allow for, what I'll use the word, is called discrimination against a corporation or a company. If that rule was in there, I'm sure it would be tossed out anyway by the, the legal community, or the Supreme Court. If that rule was applicable, then I could oppose this as well, but that rule is not there to be utilized. I'm going to go in a just a little bit different direction from my colleagues as, as what I see as long-term effects that are a positive thing. We've got something like 30 different memorandums, letters, and everything else that are associated with this TIF proposal, and I've kind of narrowed it down to two very, for me, very important issues that, that, that I'm comfortable with. And that has to do with the major street comprehensive plan for the future. Plus, in conjunction with that, it's also called the public improvements on this property. Primarily, what I'm looking at is the, on the campus site itself, on the west side, the public improvements that we're going to be seeing is the roadway construction, I believe it's called Lee Holler's Way, that's on the west side, that will be a good road, not just an average road, because somebody other gracious, good gracious is going to be putting in a good road. This will be one of the components that's very important to me, that we have a good road going forward on this, because eventually, this road will lead down to Sheridan Lake Road. We will also get a controlled intersection at this point, whereas without the TIF, we would not have that controlled intersection, plus a turning lane, which is another key important component for me, as far as having that turning lane in this development, because what I'm looking at is a, in a couple of other items here that's coming up on, on our agenda, it, it is the Velagio area that is not putting in a, what I call a slowdown or a turning lane into that property at this point, and I hope they will consider, the Velagio people will consider putting in a turning lane, similar to what we're proposing here for this Black Hills Corporation property. That's the main reasons why I'm supporting the TIF, because we get these public amenities as well, and so I can yield the floor at this point. Thank you.
John Roberts, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wish that Chad hadn't ran sooner, because that was the most articulate thing you've said in four years, and I appreciate that. But, just kidding, Chad, sorry. I, I have a lot of questions for Black Hills Power too, and actually, I have one question for either of the three of you, it's a very simple question, if you want to come up here, I just have one question for you. Thank you very much. How many years have you been in Rapid City Black Hills Corp? Okay, how many years was Black Hills Power enlightened in Rapid City?
Our, our company?
Yes.
We've been in the Black Hills region for over 130 years, we started in Deadwood.
Exactly. And I don't think you're going anywhere in the near future, so I think that us giving you $3 million for economic development is something that's well-deserved for your company, I really do. I think that if we can help you to bring more jobs to Rapid City, which I have been pressing for my entire five years on the city council, to try to bring more and more, especially high paying jobs, higher paying jobs to Rapid City, and, and I don't have any more questions, I, I thank you very much, I appreciate that. I do want to, I do want to thank Ms. Scott for bringing up the interest on that, though, that was quite interesting, and it was something that I hadn't played through on my mind before and thought about, but unfortunately, because we have so few tools in Rapid City for economic development, this is the only real tool that we have, other than vision funds, which we put on hold again, but we spend millions of dollars out of the vision funds on economic development to create less dollars than this in jobs. So this is actually, in my opinion, this is a good TIF, it's done a little bit differently, but it is the right thing to do for economic development in Rapid City. Thank you.
Surprised me. I thought everybody's been going the full five minutes, so.
I want to give my time.
No, don't. Amanda Scott for three minutes.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions of the city attorney, please?
Yes, you may.
I'm not sure if this is the right position, Joel, so redirect me if it's not, but first of all, concerning the finance charges on this project, I know most infrastructure projects that we look at for tax incremental districts, it's because of the money being up fronted, but they're for infrastructures for water and sewer and streets, so is, do you have a specific opinion on why the finance charges would be pertinent to this TIF?
Well, I know in staff, when we looked at it, the discussion with Black Hills Corp, when they originally came to the city, they were saying, look, we're looking at building a building of a certain cost, the way that this is coming out, it looks like it's going to cost more than we want to spend to build this space out, we'd kind of like to, we may build it out in the future, but if, if you could figure out a grant in the two and a half to three million dollar range, then we could perhaps build that space out now, if that's something you were interested in. Well, because we didn't have $3 million just readily available to pay them that grant now, we looked at the TIF as the mechanism for funding it. So, that works well for us, in that we don't have to come up with the money upfront, however, Black Hills Corp now is taking the risk, because they are expending the money now with the hope of future repayment. Because there's already a TIF in the area, and they're second in line for that revenue, it's going to probably, the best estimate is going to take five years for that to pay out. So they aren't going to see a dime for probably at least five years, and it may be depending on how the, the development across the road that you approved the TIF for last week plays out, that's going to largely impact when the, the original TIF is going to pay off. So it may be longer than five years, so there's some, I guess, risk involved to Black Hills Corp in that they are not going, even though they're expending the money right now to build out that additional space, they are going to have to wait for their repayment. So, they did request then that we consider using some, or providing interest to make, to kind of balance that out and make it fair, rather than just, if we had paid 3 million now, they wouldn't be taking any risk, and they would be basically reimbursed for their money, but then we would be looking at finding $3 million now. So by doing it through a TIF, and essentially what the TIF will do, it'll refund their tax payments back to them, and to pay off this additional space they're building, so, and then it will also take a number of years for that to totally pay off. So, the interest recognized the fact that, one, they're expending the money now, but they're not going to see any return on that money for at least five years, if not more, and that before they get fully reimbursed, that they are, it's going to take quite a few years before this TIF is estimated to pay off.
So then the other concern I have with that, Joel, is since they had brought up in discussion through the planning commission and the TIF committee, that they are centrally taxed. So with them being centrally taxed, and if they do get an agreement with the state to have their proportion of the taxes put back into our local economy to, to develop this TIF district and pay off 70, and then pay off their own, what happens to those tax dollars after that? I mean, because one of the questions is, the school districts, and the county, and us, I mean, if they're centrally taxed and this money goes to the state, does it, a lesser amount comes back? I mean, it, it, the concern that I have is that we redirect the tax dollars based on the property taxes of this to come back to our community, but then when the TIF is done, and we've paid off the finance charges of $2.8 million plus their construction, which I'm in favor of the construction, not the finance charges, then we get a lesser portion as well as the school and the county.
Excuse me one second, that's time for Amanda.
Well, that, okay, oh, that's my concern, is that I'm not convinced we're going to get our full benefit back, so.
Well, can I answer it, or?
She's on to time, someone else can answer, or someone else can ask you on their time if they want to. Otherwise, we're up to Darla Drew.
Well, it's not a closer. First of all, thank you, Mayor, thank you all the council for all your thoughts on this, because I've been surprised and educated. But one thing I do want to say is, Black Hills Energy, formerly Black Hills Power, is not Black Hills Corporation, they are two separate things. I mean, Black Hills Corporation owns Black Hills Energy, but actually, Black Hills Energy is a power company, Black Hills Corporation owns, is a multi-billion dollar corporation that decided to keep its wonderful offices and its finances, and its help to our community here in Rapid City. So, that, that being said, I enjoyed Mr. Meyer Henry's comments on the fact that it's not only environmental blight that we're looking at, but it's also economic blight, and I think that Rapid City could actually benefit very much from, you know, 50 jobs or the 150 jobs that will come with Black Hills Corporation and their expansion. I'm feeling like I would like to support this, I'm still thinking about Amanda's comments. Also, earlier this evening, we talked about the South Dakota School of Mines and its impact on Rapid City, and it would be nice if we had jobs for those young men or women that come out of the School of Mines, and this would be one of those opportunities. You know, I would like to keep some of those smart kids here, and I think that this is one of those, those rare opportunities that comes along, when a corporation has put their faith in this community, and they want to, they want to live here, they want to grow here, and they want to help us grow this community in a very positive way. I think that this is really one of the best opportunities we've had for job growth in this community in decades, and if we, we do this, yes, it might take a few decades to pay off, but we will see the, the benefits, as Chad said earlier, and I'm going to miss Chad on this council, but just as the railroads helped us for generations, I think that this will also help the Rapid City area economically for generations to come, so I'm going to support the, the TIF for Black Hills Corporation.
Okay, now we'll go to Chad Lewis for about 30 seconds.
Just a quick question to Black Hills Energy, are you using, I don't know who wants to answer this, are you using self-funding, or are you third-party, third-party money?
We are using third-party financing for this.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, after yesterday's article in the paper, I, I got a lot of people calling me, saying, stick to your guns, what I, what the guy didn't print was, in our conversation, my interview, I said, I am going to support the Black Hills Corp TIF. So, you know, if this were anybody other than Black Hills Corp or a local company, and it'd be election year, we'd be lined up 20-deep, politicians would, trying to take credit for the jobs being delivered here, you know, and why, the way, reason I say that is, is the Black Hills Power that we know today, the ratepayers, I believe in Rapid, only represent about 5% of its revenues, somewhere like that, you know, and I, and I hear about, I mean, monopoly and such, but, but I look at companies like a Shields, or a Cabello's, or a Boot Barn, or Taco John's, or, you know, big companies that have multiple locations, that probably Rapid City represents 5% of their revenues. And what would we be doing if, if they called us and we said, they said, we're on a short list, we want to put our corporate offices in your town, and we'd like to bring 50 to 100 jobs, you know, we'd be just falling all over ourselves, you know, and, you know, this, this company isn't what it was, it's, it's way more global, and I, I think that it, for us to sit here and just think that it was just automatic, and there was, it was, there wasn't some, probably some pretty tough negotiations in a boardroom, I, I think we owe it a great debt of gratitude to the CEO, David Emery, for, for making sure that Black Hills Corp's new offices aren't rapid. You know, yeah, they make a lot of money, but I don't see any companies that are losing money and have underpaid CEOs trying to move jobs to this town. So, you know, it's, it's tough, and, and I was opposed, you know, I sat on my hands, and I was opposed to the Buffalo Crossing deal, which is totally different, but, but these guys are creating the jobs. My problem the last time was, I think we got problems when we start giving land developers TIFs and giving them credit for, for job creation, and that can be a different argument. I wasn't wanting to talk about this tonight, but I am going to. Amanda Scott brought it, you know, everybody that's talked in favor of this, I, I hope you stick to your guns, and, and I appreciate Amanda Scott, because that, bringing up the finance charges, because I have had concerns about the finance charges, and, but, but I'm going to support it tonight, because I believe they deserve an answer to move forward, but the way to avoid finance charges is, is over the next three years, come up with cash. Let's put in a development agreement that we can come up with cash, whether it's a million one a year, through the opportunity capture fund or something, let's make a commitment to, to give these guys an answer so they can keep going, and the way to avoid finance charges is to come up with cash. In my mind, if this is worth doing, it's worth a little pain and to pay up front for, but, but these guys need an answer, and I'm going to vote yes on this one tonight, and, and I hope you guys can join me on the budget, you know, we're doing priority-based budgets, and election season, what's the number one priority? High-paying jobs. Well, by God, let's put some money in our budget to pay cash for these high-paying jobs. With that, I am not going to yield my extra time to you, all of you, and Wifanbach, I'll let it go by the wayside, I yield, thanks.
Back to, back to, back to Richie Nordstrom for 55 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may yield my time to the city attorney to answer Amanda Scott's question.
Yes.
I would just point out that if we don't create the TIF, there isn't going to be a special district, so we probably aren't going to see any of that money from the new headquarters anyway, or any of the benefit, as if it had expired in 20 years. I will say, part of your response is a bigger problem, it's my understanding that paying to county already feels like we maybe are getting less of the revenue from the central assessment than we deserve, and they are in the midst, I believe, of a project to look at and get a better accounting of what facilities are within the county, so we make sure in the future, hopefully, we get more of our revenue from the central assessment, or make sure that the revenue we get is, is a fair amount.
Okay, thank you. And now, Roberts.
I'd like to give the rest of my time to Mr. Wifanbach.
Okay, two minutes and 45 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. I was hoping that some, we talked about the interest earlier, that we, we need to understand that the principle is 3.2, the interest rate they use are a proposed interest rate, I believe that the interest rates that they're actually going to get are a little bit less than this, but I had a question for somebody who understands, what, what will the increment be, and I guess, Jafar? And I guess Jafar or Joff, if he could answer the question about what the increment payment will be.
It's, it's going to vary through the years, but I think it ranges from about 220 or 230,000 to maybe 260,000, just from our portion. I'm looking at staff here to, to verify that as well.
And the next question I would have, if, when you calculated the interest payment, I failed to ask you this today, did you use that payback if it would have been $220,000 a year on two, on the 3.2 million? Or did you use a longer period of time to figure out that interest?
I'm going to defer to our treasurer, Kimberly Noonie, who.
These are, because these are specific questions I asked the other day, and I didn't write the note, so.
Sure, we use 20 years.
Okay, so if you're at $220,000 a year paying back 3.2 million with interest, you could see that, that number won't probably ever, wouldn't happen had it, over a period of 20 years, it would pay back a little bit quicker than that.
Fair enough, except for the fact, well, the five years that we have, defer on the tip, the other tip, TIF 70.
Right. I think that's important that people realize this, that this, this increment will be paying back a tip that's already been created also. So, if it was just left to its own devices, you're talking 220 to maybe more. I would assume that it would be more on a $60 million building, just doing the quick math, but it would pay back in a quicker period of time on that 3.2 million dollar principal, had that been the only thing that we were talking about tonight.
If we didn't have to deal with the other tip, absolutely, it would be a shorter period of time.
I'm hoping, I was trying to answer some of the questions that Alderman Scott had had.
Am I able to address some? I want to correct, the amount of our increment would be more like 450,000.
Yeah, okay, that, that sounds more realistic. So, if you had a 450 million, $450,000 to pay back debt service on two-point, or 3.2 million dollars, you guys could do the math, very simple. It's a shorter, way shorter period of time than what we're imagining up here. So, we're talking about a $450,000 increment, that's what we're working with. So, if you borrow 3.2 million dollars at, say, I think they probably use a number around 5%, which is probably high, if you had $400,000 a year to pay that back, you could see that the payback would not be a 20-year period of time, and it would not add up to those, those significant numbers. So, I just wanted to point that out as we talk about it. I hope that makes sense, because I run out of time.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve. Darla Drew for 230.
I'd like to yield my time to Chad Lewis. You don't need it.
Well, you know, I appreciate the corporate welfare, I mean, the political welfare, but no, I'm good.
It's not corporate welfare.
Want to speak?
It's corporate wealth infusion. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to approve. If you approve that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Two? Okay, motion passes. Seven to two. Next item, item 55, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 55 is a second reading of ordinance number 6095, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Spurlet Consulting, Inc. for Scott and Janice Anstra for the rezoning from general agricultural district to low-density residential district two, for property generally described as being located north of the intersection of Gemstone Drive and Parkview Drive. I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item 56.
Second reading of ordinance number 6096, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Spurlet Consulting, Inc. for Villieco LLC, sorry if I mispronounced that, for a rezoning from general agricultural district to low-density residential district for property generally described as being located northeast of the intersection of Catron Boulevard and Vineyard Lane. And I make a motion to approve.
A motion in a second.
Velagio. That was Velagio.
A motion in a second. Go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'd stick to my gun zone as the request, if I can make it part of the stipulations, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time for adding another stipulation, but I would like to see a turning lane or a slowdown lane on this approach to that intersection to Catron Boulevard and Vineyard Lane.
Can we do that? I'd like to ask Dale Tech a question. Please, Mr. Mayor.
I, I don't believe it'd be appropriate to require these people that are merely subdividing a couple lots to be responsible for adding a turn lane on a major arterial road, the increase in traffic due to this would be minor at best. Certainly, we are looking at that corridor, when I say we, Public Works Department, there will be future expansion along Catron Boulevard, as witnessed by what Black Hills Corp.'s doing up there on the, what I'll call the, the south end of the, the property, we'll be looking at future expansion, Catron, to include turn lanes throughout that entire west corridor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Second reading, ordinance number 6097, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Renner Associates LLC for a rezoning from low-density residential district to medium-density residential district, property generally described as being located northeast corner of the intersection of Fifth Street and Nebraska Street. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion in a second. We'll go to Ron Wifanbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is, I want to make sure I'm on the right item. Is this the West Hills Village item? I just, I want to make a couple of comments, and I want to thank Mr. Reinicki and his staff for reaching out to the neighbors. All the emails and phone calls that I've gotten, or letters that I've gotten, directed them to Mr. Reinicki, and they've reported back to me that they've had good responses from him. He's actually knocking on the doors in the neighborhood, talking to people. West Hills Village, as I mentioned before, has always been a good neighbor. I don't think that that's going to change, and we, they, they have, the people that live in there, that's their home. The people that live in West Hills Village love it. They love the environment there, they love what it has to offer, they love the park-like atmosphere that is in the green space at West, at West Hills Village. They've made a commitment to the drainage in that area, they understand the issues over there, they're working with the city on the drainage issues in the area there. And I just, and I just, again, I want to thank you, Mr. Reinicki, for reaching out to the citizens over there that have concerns, you know, whether it be having their fence removed or whatever, I mean, the, the concerns have been a wide variety. I think you've been nothing but fair to people to give them an opportunity to voice their opinion, and I don't think the process could work any better than that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to compliment Mr. Reinicki on his work on the West Hills Village expansion. And as far as a homeowner in that area, I would love to see the West Hills Village come in by, by where I live. There'd be no wild parties. Hopefully, you know, it'd be nice and quiet, you know? I mean.
Not until I get.
Really? Really? You'd be waiting, okay, partying down? Whatever. Anyway. Going for it till 4:00 PM. But anyway, thank you for your time and effort in this, and I just, I think that it's, it's a great asset for our city, and also, you, you could build in my neighborhood anytime. Thank you.
I was just going to say, Darla, you wait a couple of years, you can move right in.
We'll go to Chad Lewis. Okay, there's a motion to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 58.
Second reading, ordinance number 6098, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Renner Associates LLC for a rezoning from low-density residential district to medium-density residential district for property generally described as being located south of Texas Street and north of Freedom Court. I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Item number 59.
Second reading, ordinance number 6099, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by KTM Design Solutions for Hague Brothers LLC for a rezoning from general commercial district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located south of Moon Meadows Drive and east of Highway 16. I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We're on to the bill list. Item number 60. We'll go to Finance Officer Polly Insumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye.
No.
Opposed? Any objection to adjourning?
No.
We're adjourned.